I open this meeting as planned, but at seven quarter. And I cannot make a statement. There's an open session, public meetings are subject to being videotaped. Your image and voice may be recorded.
You too, Jack. I'm not gonna say anything.
I'm gonna comb my hair.
Can I make a motion that we...
I move that we accept the minutes of the meeting of September on eleven.
Second. Any other discussion of this? One favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. You know this. Scott.
Hey, Scott. You good, Jack?
It's just, it's, it's just, Dudley Road and A and R. Right, seven forty-five, A and R, eighty-five.
Okay. Any bills?
No, I thought I had it filled, but it isn't. It's just a sheet. This is, this is in here someplace. Well, that, that you...
Yeah, this is a blank.
What are you saying about a blank?
Well, they printed some with our signatures.
They printed some?
So, those have our signatures and these don't. So, we can sign these in addition to these that are already done.
That's true.
Then if other people...
I think you could give them, put one up there.
But then these are gonna get back to me.
We didn't date, who signed it originally?
Oh, so we should date this one too?
I don't know, we have two different ones with different dates.
No. We agree to sign it. Oh, this one's already signed. Date this one. Create a sign on the side of that.
Does everybody shows up or okay?
Everybody signs up on this one. I think this thing, date this one. We have no date on that. Oh. Carnas and May first, two thousand seventeen. Date of adoption, six twelve.
We got the dates right here over at the right.
Well, this is A and May first, this is right.
It is the card? Is this the card?
Although it says, first, two thousand seventeen.
This is May first, it's not this. Where do we sign it? Is that the latest one?
My license.
Tell me, A and May first.
I'm old, yes, I'm seventeen.
Of two thousand eighteen. What have we completed?
These two couple? We got some tags. Sorry, Frank Finn. Yeah.
Now, for the timely business. This is most pertinent. What's that?
I can ask him to change. I think they all...
Well, this definitely is the May, the May of two thousand.
Yeah.
What will he essentially, it's got, I can probably... It's kind of a filter here.
So, she's got something.
We asked, or we leave it?
I normally would've just done, shut down the product.
I mean, you may as well just issue a, a permit through you with that now.
Yeah. So, we can... But he's got this. Yeah. That's all the working on.
Take care of it. A and R and Dudley Road, seven forty-five. I hope we're getting it done. Nope. Oh, good. Nope.
And actually, uh... And he actually, Kevin, frontage, actually was a better, a better thing for me in a scenario, scenario of that. Yes, uh, frontage you asked for.
Good. Can I give you that driveway and Eastman across?
The scenario I was thinking of is, what if these two people, you know, I'm not there anymore, these two people are fighting and this guy, because he packs this guy here. Now, this guy can call the police and say, hey, this is my property, I got him to stop. So, it was a better thing, better thing for me, for sure. So, it all worked out better.
Good.
Basically, all we did was changed that real point about three feet this way to make it even larger.
Good. Good. So, I'm glad it worked out. I move that we sign a plan, date of July thirteen, two thousand and eighteen. For Steve Weston, drawn by Cornerstone Engineering. Steve Book six nine eight, page two four.
Yeah.
Showing the division of parcel into two lots. Second. Neither, neither with the required, required frontage, but, um... Bringing both into greater compliance, I guess we'd say, some, approving the subdivision control and unrequited. Second.
Any other discussion?
No, looks good, thank you.
Looks good.
She knows it's good.
Okay. One favor?
Aye.
Aye. You have it.
How many prints does town give?
And we'll sign the my law for you, so we can...
Two, I'll take one and I get the other. I think that's the industry of gauge and vista. You wouldn't happen to know where that is from here?
Eloise does.
On screen. On screen. Chris, Google it.
I went there a long time ago.
Yeah.
Do you remember the number five?
Twenty-five.
Can I get some background? If the rest could get up, I guess. Twenty-three, five. Twenty-five, five. I owe you what?
I guess you gotta look it up.
Two lots?
Two lots. It comes out for hundred pounds.
Fifty for the first and twenty-five, be a twenty-five, seventy-five?
No, I think it's...
Not the burl when I go to show.
The worst, Mr. Fisk.
Should've went on that.
Fifty for the first lot, twenty-five, sixty, seventy-five hours.
A and R, A and R payment. A and R. A and R.
P. P.
You said seventy-five?
Yes. Do we have a form eight? Did you, did you provide a form eight?
Form eight? I hope so.
I don't, I don't really bring a form eight. First time you came in, you had a form eight.
From the, sure, yeah.
And it's just a, a sheet of this size.
I don't have it now. Let's see, kind of go to hotels.
Yeah, I was getting, I was just surveying. It's got it on file. You should've dropped it off. Form eight.
I'm sure he gave it to me. When we did, redid the...
That's right.
Probably misplaced it. Did I give that? Can I get the form eight, wait, wait? You go for it, Eloise?
Thank you, gentlemen.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thanks for your patience.
Actually, it was a good thing that we, you know, dropped it off.
Worked through it?
Yeah. It's good. I think it worked out better, I think, in the long run.
Good.
Thank you.
Yep, thanks, Tom.
Why don't I take my coat and hat?
Listen to the news last night, we started off, girl had to be rescued from, from a confide upon, from a rope course.
Oh, yeah. This is zip line, isn't it? I saw that.
All right.
What's that?
It's for Tom.
That's for Tom.
Tony?
I suppose, I don't know, you, I don't have property, that's...
You guys, which way? Guess I might, might like that.
That's for your...
The highlight of this. Because you have association with the list. Just to remind you, we need to give the plans for the town bond. I told you it's due. Yes. I'll do it when I get there. We're opening the public hearing on the senior residential development off Highland Street. I asked the proponent to explain what he doing.
Good evening, Brandon Dushark, Dushark and Dillis. Tonight with Greg Roy, who's the engineer on the project, and the advocates, Chris Lee, Jack Sargent. And tonight, we'll be presenting and collecting feedback on a senior residential development off Highland Street. This is the overview plan here. This is Highland Street, and as you head down towards the town center there. It's a seventy-eight acre parcel of land. There's some homes that front along Highland Street here. This piece has frontage here, as shown in green, and heads back, there's about seventy-eight acres here in the back. This, as I said, is a senior residential development. It consists of sixty-six units. There's a roadway that kind of comes in, enters in the back. We've got a loop road here. The units, as shown here, are duplexes. We will be using a shared septic system, which is shown down in this area here. So, basically, there'll be a sewer collection system that picks up all the sewer and comes down to a common system. And in terms of water supply, we've actually filed for and have site source approval for public water supply, shown here. We, we have two public water supply wells that'll basically supply all the potable water, as well as fire protection for the proposed development. One of the things, basically, it's been laid out in accordance with the requirements or the bylaw for the senior residential development. There's open space that's been set aside, kind of buffers between the proposed development and the homes along here, and then wraps, wraps around the back there. The drainage for the new roadway is basically broken down into three areas. As you come off of Highland Street here, this is kind of a low area that comes down. We've got one stormwater management area here. We've got another, I think it kind of sheds back here to the back, we've got a stormwater management here, as well as one other area there. Basically, Greg, we'll talk a little bit more about the, the road construction, the layout, and the drainage, but essentially, everything from the site is managed in accordance with the stormwater management policy. The application has been reviewed by your review consultant, Scott, who's here also tonight. We have received some initial comments from him, that we can, we can get into some of those if, if needed.
Yeah, the detailed comments, I'd like to know, anybody from the public has any comments on the general aspects of the...
Sure. Yeah, that's, that's generally what it is, so if we want to kind of take some little comments, we can, we can do that first, and then we can kind of get into more of the design questions and...
Whatever you like. I'd have to give you a more, a little bit more of a presentation on some of the finer points of the design, or we can hold off till later, whatever your pleasure is.
Yeah, it's nice point.
I'll try to be brief.
I'm not gonna be jumping up and...
No, I'm like solicit engineers, so I'll try to, I'll try to be as brief as possible. So, as Brandon said, the roadway, I'm gonna talk to you a little bit about the roadway, I'll talk a little bit about the drainage and utilities, what we're proposing for those, and then certainly very interested to hear any comments on the public and comments on the board. So, the road specifically is, the, the main road here is twenty-two, approximately twenty-two hundred feet in length. This secondary road here is approximately eight hundred fifty feet in length, and then there's the short spur road right here, which is approximately three hundred fifty feet in length. The first, approximately nine hundred thousand to a thousand feet of road is single access, so we have designed that in accordance, in general accordance with the, I'm gonna screw up the, the next level up from your minor road. I'm drawing a blank now. Secondary, secondary street, thank you, Mark. And we've designed that with a twenty-four foot width. We've also have a boulevard style entrance. Brandon, could you flip that plan over? Thank you. So, the entrance, we've, we've set up as a boulevard style entrance with an in and a dedicated in and a dedicated out. We've also allowed for a mailbox area where vehicles entering the site could pull off and, and get mail at a centralized mail location. Again, we have a twenty-four foot width all the way along that single access road that goes all the way up, up to the first intersection, and the stormwater management system is right in there, and I'll talk a little bit more about that in a second. Throw that one up, Brandon, thank you. At the first intersection, right here, we transition to a twenty-foot roadway width, and we go down to a minor street standard, due to the fact that we'd have less vehicles, because there now are two ways in and out around the loop network. So, the balance of the, of the roads from this point are twenty feet in width. Excuse me. We, as Brandon mentioned, have designed this in a duplex configuration. All of the units will, would have separate driveways, and we've set the units about thirty-five feet off the edge of the pavement, so that, so we have generous length on the driveway, so you can really fit a couple of vehicles in the driveways, our intention. Also, one single car garage on each unit. So, each unit really has three units of off-street parking, but we've also provided the prerequisite required visitor spaces, so we have some cluster here, the intersection, in, in two bays of parking. I think there's seventeen spaces over there, is that right, Brandon? That's what it says, seventeen?
Uh, yes.
And then there's an additional six spaces down here, at the, on the lower end of the site, so we've tried to spread those out. There's also another bay, written along this, parallel configuration along that spur road. So, those four parking areas meet your one to, your one parking space per three-unit visitor space ratio in your regulations. Additionally, we have a clubhouse proposed, right here in the back of the site, with parking spaces associated with that. The, all of the roads would be, all of the loop roads in this area would have a sidewalk, a five-foot wide sidewalk, for pedestrian accessibility throughout the site. We have generally looked to encourage pedestrian circulation in the development, particularly a visibility between the units, but also walkability over to the clubhouse amenity for the facility. I think other things, layout wise, we've kept the, the units about forty feet apart widthwise, so that might seem narrow, but for a development like this, a lot of times you see those even as close to twenty... as close to 20 or 25 feet, which I think 20 feet is allowed by your regulations, so we've widened those out quite a bit. I think I'll talk about the drainage. So we, we've tried to take a thoughtful approach, I guess is what I'll call it, to the drainage. Maybe you have flipped that plan over, Brandon, thank you.
I have a question about the roadways, before we go to the drainage. The sidewalks?
Okay, yeah.
Where are the sidewalks?
Sure.
Can we walk from Highland Street into the?
So we have not proposed a sidewalk along that, along that stretch, because as I mentioned, we're really, our design goal was interior walkability.
Well, our plan for the town is to have the whole town be walkable, so we really hope you can add that.
Okay, well, certainly a discussion point, so appreciate that, thank you.
Yeah, I think that's one of the things that kind of came up in our informal discussions, and I think is one of the things kind of Chris was looking into, as far as there was access, or the potential for access coming off-site. I think it was kind of a dislocation here, Chris.
Yeah, we're trying to see if we can get a walking path down here to Harris Street, and I'm not sure if we can or not. It is very steep, but I've built a road down here for the welder work and well service, so we don't have very much further to go.
Well, there's a railroad there we could walk along, right?
Well, that's the thing. You don't own the railroad. We're trying to get it to Harris Street, you're on what you own, yes. This gets much simpler, incidentally, if you can work out something with the railroad that you have rights to walk on that as a walking path.
Yeah.
And they're never going to use it, but trying to get them to move is a different subject. But then we'd be all set, because we could come down on the path that exists with some improvement.
Yeah.
And then you can come out the railroad, and also, there's a little path, I am, somebody told me it had a right-of-way to Harris Street against the little point of what would be part of Wheeler's Garage, but I don't know that for a fact, and I don't know if the owner of that is amenable to it. But we are working at that, but not sure if we can pull it off.
Thank you for that comment. Couple more minutes, and then I'll be quiet. So drainage, as Brandon mentioned, we have three primary drainage areas. We've, we're proposing a mixture of closed and open drainage system. Actually, Brandon, that plan's probably better. So there are three sort of clusters of, well, four, but on this plan, three clusters of catch basin, sort of conventional catch basin, storm drain type systems. There's a high point in the road right here, all this would flow down to this set of catch basins, and then another high point here, which flows down to this set of catch basins, which is in the, in a low point. And then, and then we discharge down to a detention basin in the back of the units. Likewise, we have the same type of configuration right in this area, where we have drainage from the high point coming down to a set of catch basins, drainage from this high point coming down here. And we have, we know we have some ledge on the site, so we've tried to cluster areas where we need to do some deeper, some of the deeper excavations, we've tried to consolidate those. So where we have to put in a deep sump catch basin, which is a very deep structure, we've tried to put those, consolidate those on the site. And so that's sort of the scheme that we, that we use in the drainage to lay this out. This set of catch basins here would discharge to a swale, which would also pick up the runoff from this spur road, as well as runoff from the back of these units, and discharge it down to this, to this stormwater area there. The one, the drainage basin in the front, as Brandon pointed out, thanks Brandon, is generally intended for, is really only intended for the runoff from the high point of the road, the first 900 or so feet of the road, which would be handled in this, in this stormwater area there. And then in the back, there's a detention basin that would pick up some of the runoff from the backs of these units, as well as the clubhouse area and the access road, septic system area, and manage that here before it was discharged off-site. As Brandon mentioned, we are, we have proposed and have actually permitted and constructed two public water supply wells in this location here, which will supply the potable water for the development, as well as fire protection. So the general overview of that system is two wells, very similar to what you would see in your backyard, but with higher capacity, that would fill water storage tanks in a booster station, which will be co-located in the basement of the clubhouse facility. We'll have a booster pump system that will pressurize the distribution system in the development, which will be sized for both domestic flows and sprinkler flows for the units, so each of the units will have sprinkling systems. And then additional to that, in meeting with the fire department early on in this project, they requested not only just, not only the sprinklers, but also a fire, a 30,000-gallon fire cistern, which we are also proposing here, right as you enter, get up to that first unit, right along the left. And that would be filled from the water system to keep that volume topped off. And then the septic system, we, we have the proposed leaching system here. There would be four areas, collection areas, we'd be collecting with septic tanks and pump chambers, sort of dispersed throughout the site, and pumped over to a centralized septic tank and pump chamber, where it will dose the leaching field. Very similar to what you're used to in your backyard, just on a bigger scale. That's, that's it. We did get Scott, Scott's comments, appreciate that, Scott, thank you. I have not prepared a formal response, we just, we just, we got, we got those today. I have reviewed them, in preliminary nature. I don't really find much there that we can accommodate, so most of those things, I think we shouldn't have any problems in subsequent planning versions, but I certainly don't want to take any, anything away from Scott, but has something he wants to present specifically on that.
Sir, I think there are some, Scott Miller from Haley Ward, there are some questions on possibly some waivers?
Yeah.
If you need them, and that may be something you want to talk about tonight, but.
I'd like to, yes, thank you.
And the other one I came up with, I may have been looking at an older plan, but it doesn't show this as being an overlay district, is that a, is this an overlay now for, for this? I was looking at a 2011 plan, I think that was.
Right, yeah, I don't think it shows up on the map, but.
No.
So, Mr. Miller's letter, and perhaps that's the one thing that we should, we should talk about tonight. There are two, so your SRD bylaw, even though this is intended to be a private road system, a condominium development, which would have a private road and a homeowners association that will maintain it, snowplow it and the like, your SRD bylaw requires compliance with the subdivision rate for the road standards. So we, we endeavored to do that. There are two areas, there are two waivers that we would need, incorrect from Rock Scott, but I think this is it. We have what's a reverse curve situation right here on the main road, where we curve one way and then transition, and your bylaw requires a certain tangent distance there. So we request a waiver to shorten that tangent distance. Really what we're trying to do, there's a, the access road is built in there, and the grades are quite severe on the, on the two sides, so we've laid this out so that it can follow that existing path as much as possible, which, which I think is, which will minimize the site disturbance. We've also submitted a turning movement plan, a fire turning movement plan with this, that shows clear that we could get a, the, the Berlin truck through the, maneuvering through the site. So that's just, that's one of the waivers that we would be requesting. And the second is relative to this curve on the loop road, your regulations would require that to be 150-foot centerline radius, and we're proposing a 100, so just a tighter radius there. And again, that's to better align with, we think, to better align with the topography in there, allows a little more space between the road and that unit. So those are the two waivers that Mr. Miller identified that we would, we would be requesting.
Do you have anything to say about these curves?
No, that, we shouldn't have any problems with those dimensions. Probably the only concern is that the roadway is going to narrow from 24 to 20 feet throughout the rest of the project. In the event of a fire, anything of that, of trying to get pieces of equipment to pass each other, maybe a little bit problematic.
Do you recall what we did at Brooklyn?
I don't know what that current roadway is width. I can certainly find, check that.
Yeah.
Again, we certainly would, would thought it irresponsible to ask for that waiver on the, on this section, where we have the single access, but our rationale was that if we had fire apparatus, say servicing unit 12, Margaret Charlie, that you, you know, you could access this way, and you could access this way around there. So, you know, it's, the two ways around to that unit from this point mitigates, maybe mitigates that a little bit, I don't want to put words in your mouth, but that was our rationale for why we, why we proposed a narrow width in that location.
If you're going to put the mailboxes down towards the front, and you don't have a sidewalk, people would either, would have to get in their cars, which would be a terrible thing.
That's an excellent point. It's a great point. I hear you loud and clear on that.
Or our golf carts.
All our golf carts, yes.
Tricycles. Old lady tricycles.
More electric tricycles.
Senior scooter races, I can say it now.
What'd he say?
Scooter races.
Scooter, yeah. Be sledding down those hills.
I think the only other discussion item is I recommended bringing the sidewalks go up to the visitor parking now, and feed into the visitor parking, so you'd have to, if you're walking along the sidewalk, you'd be walking behind the parked cars that might be coming or going.
Yeah.
Any feeling on going around?
That's no problem at all. So we, the way we configured, actually, the way we configured it is we actually made the parking space bay from the gutter line to the back 25 feet, so we have, and we'd start the striping five feet back from the gutter, so we'd have space there, but that's a valid point. I mean, you have a, you have a potential here for pedestrian, a car backing out and a pedestrian crossing. I don't think we have any problem. I mean, this really wouldn't get any wider, we would just extend the sidewalk around, and we'd move those parking spaces down, and the sidewalk would just be on the backside. We don't have a problem with that at all.
So people going along the sidewalk are still cut across the park?
Well, we do, they go around the parking area in the back, so we just, we were just, we would basically just run the sidewalk like this, around the back of the, around the back of the parking area. So we'd come in and run it right around the back. That's fine. I don't have a problem with that. I think there was some, some comments relative to the drainage in our hydrocath model, which I'm just, we have to get into, I don't anticipate any issues with that, we just have to get in and tweak those.
I think those were the only really discussion items they had, the rest are cleanup type things. Or clarify. Or say they're wrong, maybe I just need to be told.
Yeah, there's some notation issues and things like that, and I don't.
Well, your clubhouse timing, but I think you're going to have that going up, because you get the infrastructure for the.
Right.
So it's going to go up as soon as your first unit.
Yeah, I mean, we'll need to talk as a team on phasing, I mean, that's another.
There's a couple of things with phasing, I have to remember, which is, there's a set aside number of these units that are for moderate income, too.
Right.
A couple of years ago, everybody isn't aware of this, we worked on this thing for 10 years at this price. A few years ago, we talked about where they were going to be, and they're, they're actually going to be spread around so that not all of the moderate income units are built in the same location, so that's part of it. The clubhouse, usually in the projects we've done in the past, usually when you get to about 20 to 25% of the units being built, we usually get the clubhouse done at that point, and I'm sure, you know, if we need to put it in writing or something, just so, because I know one of the worries always is that you build a project and the clubhouse never gets done. But in this case, we have to get it built anyways, because the water system has to go in there, and we're also going to have control systems for part of the septic system in there, so if anything, it may even get built before some of the houses get built, to be honest.
I wonder how you can get the houses built before you have your water system?
Well, that's what I mean, that, it has to go up.
You mentioned 20 houses or so before you had to build the clubhouse.
Well, that's typically, that's typically the way we do it. In this case, because we've got to put that equipment in there, the building's going to get built. I mean, I would say that the clubhouse function part of it, the rooms like this, it may be, you know, 10 or 15 units may be built by the time that gets finished up, but the structure itself will be up earlier.
Might wait on the, building the parking lot and those kinds of things, too.
I'll bring up something that, although I haven't even discussed with Greg, but I have, did use it in another town. Instead of building a sidewalk on top of a curb, we delineated the sidewalk with a white paint line, similar to what they're doing on bike lanes now. This has the advantage that when you plow the snow, you don't have to come back with a small plow to usually fight the drift, the street plow left, to clear the sidewalk. The highway, you just plow the whole thing at once, makes it much easier and quicker. And doing it that way might sort of relieve some of the questions that were asked about going down to the narrower street. Because obviously, if you're bringing in fire apparatus, you're not going to have people wandering down the sidewalk, and that gives you the extra swing room for the fire trucks. But it's just an idea, I don't know if the town would like that or not. Think, think about it, we don't have to make up our minds tonight.
We could catch up with the highway superintendent.
Yeah, we'll catch up with some people and pick it around, and you reject it out of hand right now, that's fine, too.
So you've done that elsewhere?
Yes, I did it up in Winchendon. Yeah, here's a picture of, well, this is for a bike lane, but same idea.
So we did it in Winchendon?
Yeah. Yeah. Was it something sort of like that? So you do the Kikot burn in the back? Yes.
So, yeah, we'd just be flipping the Kikot burn to the back of the.
It's just a sidewalk on one side, right? One side of the road.
Correct.
Basements are, some are walkout, some like.
Yeah, we, well, we've laid the project out, most of the units on the loop work out nicely as walkouts, just because the grade falls off from the road. So these are, the exception of maybe this one, these are all walkouts, all the way up to about here, and then these are base, we've laid them out as basements. I think there might be a cake time decision on some of these, with depending on how much ledge we hit.
We just assumed they're basements, it's a nice selling point.
Right.
But we just assume, stay away from blasting also.
Right, right. And then these, these units from here, from the clubhouse, well, the clubhouse itself would be a walkout, so we're proposing to access the basement on the walkout, so that we can access the pump equipment in the basement with the truck and that kind of apparatus. And then these units here up to above this point would be a walkout, and these units would be sort of an at-grade basin or a daylight. In some cases, we could get a full-size window with the grades, so we've, some, some of these here are daylights, for example. Well, we can't get a full walkout, because it would take too much grading, but the grades worked out nice for a daylight, so that's the way we set it up.
Can you remind me about square footage?
Square footage of the units?
Units?
Smallest ones will be about 16, 50, and the largest, as far as the base unit would be, is probably just under 2,000 now. In particular, the ones that have walkout basements, somebody could probably finish off another 500 or 600 square feet in the basement if they wanted to, but that's above and beyond what the, the normal unit would be.
And how are you counting the square feet?
Pardon me?
How are you counting square feet? How are you?
Well, that's finished space inside.
Finished space?
Yes.
So if it has a finished basement, it has more square feet than lower space.
Right, that's right. And, you know, in some extent, we have to, that falls into the condominium fees, too, because the bigger the unit you have, obviously, you pay more than somebody that has a smaller unit. So when each unit gets done, we actually have to have a survey or prepare a plan that shows exactly how many square feet. So when each unit gets done, we actually have to have a survey or prepare a plan that shows exactly how many square feet each unit. And it gets filed along with the deed so that they can proportion the condo fees accordingly.
We lay these out for the, this sort of standard boxes, peg down and they're all based on the largest unit that we put in there. So if we put a small unit in, we just have more space between the, between the unit, above a unit.
So have you in essence said that you're going to extend the sidewalk to Highland?
We have a problem with that. We want to talk about that more.
You know, my only concern with it is you could, you know, you could do that, but, you know, we run into the same problem. One of the places you extended the sidewalk to nowhere.
Yeah, but the nowhere, as we've already said, is the mailboxes.
Yeah. Well, I mean, you could extend them to the mailboxes. The mailboxes are always a controversial issue with the post office nowadays. Because they don't want to go on private property. And, you know, the last couple of projects I've worked on, we've actually had them spread around the loop roads, very similar to this. It all depends on who the postmaster is at the time. Sometimes they'll allow you to do it, sometimes they won't. In this case, we put it out by the street, which seems to be acceptable by most of the post offices. And if that's the case, if we need to, you know, make a walkway down there, it's, it's not a big deal as long as we know, you know, that that's what you guys want us to do.
And the distance from the mailboxes to Highland is what?
Oh, from the mail, this distance here?
Right.
About a hundred feet. There's nothing engineering-wise that precludes us from the sidewalk. So I mean, I think, we heard you loud and clear. That's great comments. So we'll regroup on that. Thank you.
Do you have a dollar figure for the sale of the units that you're heading for?
Keep adding sidewalks, the price goes up.
I just want to know your range that you.
I would say that, you know, the, the moderate income ones are actually controlled by the state. But the market rate units are probably at this point going to be in the low four, low to mid four hundreds. They probably will go up depending on if people add finished basements and different things to it. Other projects that I've done similar to this, they typically start out that way. And then people go crazy and put sixty thousand dollars worth of kitchen cabinets in, you know, so, but that will be the base prices in the low fours to start.
Is there going to be any energy efficiency besides what the town requires in these units?
In terms of?
Oh, I don't know. Insulation?
Well, insulation, all of that nowadays is governed by the Energy Code, which is pretty stringent and it gets more stringent all the time. You know, compared to a house that was built five years ago, these things are super efficient compared to that. They'll all have, you know, high efficiency hot water heaters and furnaces will be that way. They all have central air conditioning.
Are you planning on oil furnaces?
No, these will be propane, gas. Gas. Yes.
Non-natural gas.
Is this the time when you talk about the design of the building or is that another time? So what are they going to look like?
They predominantly are one and a half story units. Typical, what you might see that's been built over the last ten years is what people refer to as like contemporary colonial, if you want to call it that. They would be, I'm trying to think of something in town that I could tell you that is the same, but they're relatively, you know, heavy trim, a lot of windows, tall windows. Pretty heavily landscaped on the outside. They probably will all have, pretty much on the outside will be of all vinyl siding, vinyl trim, just for low maintenance. It's not too many people use cedar cloud boards anymore. When you can't get them or they're too expensive.
Are the garages in the front or in the back?
The garages are in the front.
Oh, that's bad. That's very bad.
It's kind of impossible in a layout like this to put them around the back. So they're all the front.
Porches?
They all will have, the walkout ones will definitely have a patio or which goes with it, a deck off the back. Because we'll leave that for secondary egress out of the unit. There'll be a deck with stairs down. There'll be a front entry porch, depending on what the style of unit is, they could be different sizes. And the ones that have a walkout, if the walkout is finished, they probably have a patio down below that you'd walk out onto.
Do you have first floor master bedrooms?
First floor master bedroom and bath, living room, dining room, laundry area on the first floor. Second floor will be the second bedroom and another bath upstairs. Depending again on the style of the unit, some of them will have bonus area upstairs. It could be finished off as, it won't be as a bedroom, but it could be finished off as a office or a study or whatever. All these are going to be restricted to two bedrooms per unit.
What's the term? We have these thirty-six inch doors or wheelchair?
Yeah, I mean, usually what we do with these is, you know, most houses typically have thirty-inch doors between all the rooms. We usually use thirty-six inch doors. Reason being that if people age, if you have to use a wheelchair, you can go through a thirty-six inch door without any trouble. You can sometimes fit through a thirty-inch door, but doing the doors, I mean, that's one thing you can do up front. We don't, typically don't build the units handicapped accessible unless there's a buyer that wants it handicapped accessible. And we do that at no additional cost, but it does change some of the cabinet work and that kind of stuff. But, but they will be kind of planned ahead for that down the road.
The way we've done the grades in the front, speaking of handicapped accessibility, would be an easy add to put a handicap ramp in there. So I mean, it wouldn't be a standard feature, but it would be an easy addition to the.
We try to do the finished grade going in so you only have one or two steps to get in. So you don't have a whole flight of stairs to go up.
Then that's what we, that would lead them out. Do you have a size of, the dimensions of the clubhouse and what would be in the clubhouse?
I give you an idea what's in it. I haven't got any dimensions yet until we get the water system design, because that's kind of got to drive. Because we've got to know how big all these tanks and stuff we've got to put inside. Usually what we do is you have one large meeting room and possibly a secondary meeting room. We typically usually put a little kitchenette and a bathroom in there too, so that when people are having meetings, they've got something to do. The other thing that happens is lots of times, some of the owners of the unit want to have a larger party. If they don't have it at the house, they can reserve that unit and have everybody be there for family, get to whoever they are.
Estimated time that you'd start building?
I could talk a little about that if you want. The, so we have this permit approval process, obviously. We've also filed a notice of intent with the Conservation Commission. We're waiting to hear from them on a meeting date. So we have that, that'll sort of be working in parallel with this process. And then we have an additional water system approval that we need to do. As I mentioned, we've drilled the wells. So the water, a public water supply permitting for a project like this, a community water system is a two-part process. The first, the first permit application, which we've already filed and received approval, is called the site source approval. And all that does is tells DEP, notifies DEP that we intend to advance the water supply wells in the location. And they give us approval to do that and to conduct the pumping tests and the water quality tests. So we have advanced the wells. We have, by all accounts, very good water quantity and quality there. And we will be doing the extended flow tests and things for that soon. After we get that, that data from that, that's when we can go and we can do the detailed design on the booster station, the tank design, the final specifics on the booster, on the water distribution system. And when we get that all packaged up, we send that back to DEP in a second, a secondary permit application where they will then give us permission to build. So, you know, we're talking a few months, I think.
It's October, probably the spring start.
While we're on the subject, tentatively, I'm trying to do a little bit of this water testing myself, just to save money. Goes for five days, twenty-four hours a day. I guess it'd be quite a payroll if you, but I like camping, I think. But anyway, we want to start Sunday noon and we'll get done, what, Friday, following Friday noon? So if you see your neighbors or whatever, I'll be going in and out of there all times of night, in a rather quiet car. And if you live in the neighborhood, you'll have a little generator chugging way up there. And we'll be pumping some water down over the hill for five days. So it's nice to get that, you know.
Public access? When are you doing this?
Starting Sunday noon. Yes. Yep, if that all goes well.
Is this site going to have all underground utilities or what are your plans for that?
Everything's underground.
Okay.
Everything's underground from Highland Street, yeah.
That'll be the access?
Yes, yeah. The power will tie in out there, you know, power cable TV at that point. All the other utilities are included on the site, so they're all the underground.
Okay.
Do you want to comment on the common land?
Oh, yeah. Sure. We mentioned the site is seventy-eight acres in size. Your requirements are for thirty percent, correct? Thirty percent or twenty-five? We're doing another S R D in another town, which is.
Thirty percent.
Thank you. Okay. We have proposed approximately forty-nine acres of the seventy-eight acres to be open space, which is approximately sixty-two acres of open space on the site. So we're more than.
Sixty-two percent?
Sixty-two percent, excuse me, which is more than W percentage. So all of the areas, this whole strip here, from this line down to the, down to the applied property, would all be open space, including the area of the well. The well areas, the wells are compatible with the open space, so we can, we can put those in there. As well as this whole strip back here from this line back to the property. So really, we're almost completely surrounding the site with the forty-nine acres of open space.
And then which portion of that open space, what percentage of it is going to be disturbed?
Good question. So the only portions we're proposing disturbance on is right here for the access road to the wells.
Right.
And for this detention basin right there. So it's just, there's a heavy green line that'll be hard to see, but this light green area past this line, that area would be the disturbed area. That's probably, actually, I have that calculation. It's probably nominally an acre of that, forty-nine acres that would be disturbed.
So you're going to like leave the trees and the vegetation?
Yeah, yeah.
And then you're proposing to create a corporation and the corporation would own the common land?
Yes.
Yeah, it's a little bit up to you. I just, our idea was to leave it with the homeowners and someone holding the development rights, your Conservation Commission or whatever. To ensure that it's never developed.
We've actually set it up in two parcels, so, and there was a few reasons for that, but the main reason for that was to document that, the camera, which one it was. I think it's this parcel would be what would be required right here to meet your thirty percent open space. And that this would be in access to that. So if the board had a preference for how those things were conveyed, you know, we have some flexibility, I guess is what I'm trying to find out with how that's done. So certainly we can discuss that if the board has a preference on, or any input to provide on that.
Moore, you want to go over any of these comments?
Question back here.
I'll give a quick answer.
You indicated that you had a similar development in Winchendon?
No, I did not have a development. I just used this idea of the sidewalk being an extension of the street.
Yeah.
And delineated, so it gets plowed quicker and easier.
So do you have any other developments like this that?
No, I do not. Jack had built several in Hudson, laid one out in Lancaster, but didn't actually build it.
Okay.
Yeah, I mean, if you wanted to drive through, get a feel for it, it would also give you an idea architecturally what they'd look like.
Okay.
Slaughter Farm in Hudson, which is down off of Lower Main Street, we added towards Subrey on Lower Main Street.
What's the street address?
It's actually Slaughter Farm Way, but it's, if you look for cane concrete, the access road right across from cane concrete, it's a big entrance sign. It has a boulevard entrance like this one does.
Yeah, okay.
The other one is, I built Slaughter Farm, another one that I developed and permitted, but I didn't build, was Blue Heron Pond over in Lancaster. And it's off of Route one-ten. I forget what the name of that street is in Lancaster. High Street Extension, yeah. That one in particular, if you want to look at, you know, people were talking about, you know, the waiver of the subdivision requirements on the roadway. Lancaster allowed us to waive the requirements for radiuses in there. And that one versus Slaughter Farm gives you a good idea, because what tends to happen is when we build big wide roads and meet subdivision requirements, it's not necessarily the visitors, but the people that live there, they drive too fast. In Lancaster, because the roads are narrower and there's sharp turns, people drive nice and slow through the neighborhood. So if you get a chance to drive through both, I mean, kind of get a feel for what they're like.
Yeah, good. Thank you.
What's the one in Lancaster? What's the one in Lancaster again?
It's called Blue Heron Pond.
Blue Heron Pond.
It's off of High Street Extension, which is Route one-ten, yeah, one-ten in Lancaster. Just before you get into Clinton, actually, on one-ten.
Didn't we finish the timeline because we left it off at water? When I asked about construction.
Sorry, yeah, I was trying to get at how long it was going to take us to get through permitting. So the permitting of the water supply will take us a few, a few more months. And I think that'll probably time, likely to time pretty well with the, with this process as well as the conservation process. So I think, you know, we're looking at probably having a shovel-ready project within, let's call it three months. But whether, how that times out with the New England winter, I guess we'll, time will tell. So it's likely a spring.
My guess is, you know, early spring, start construction, first occupancy would probably be end of the summer next year.
Next year, you're talking like six months before occupancy from your start to your after.
I just want to be sure when you said next year. Yeah. Also, you know, depending on how the winter is, but if you get started in April, you're probably looking at July to August at the earliest for the first units to be, you know, habitable, let's put it that way. What we tend to do is rough the road and get started on the first unit, get started on the water system. And then hopefully everything comes together six months down the road after that, but we'll see how it goes.
Obviously, I hope to really pick up speed. Speed hasn't gone on this.
It's only been ten years so far.
Yeah, yeah. In terms of, I mean, the market drives, the, the market kind of drives the.
Yeah, we were ready, we were hoping to do this back in two thousand and six and seven.
Right.
Getting the basic designs of the sewer system and the rest of this laid out. Ran into two thousand and eight, someone senior could get out of their house without taking a loss, they were not going to put their money back into more real estate.
Right.
Pretty dry ten years.
But these type of units have been selling pretty well around the area. The, another one we've been working on. Another one we've been working on recently is a development, an act, they call it active adult development, still, by the airport, which completely sold out in about less than twelve months. Sixty-six units sold out in about twelve months from when they started marketing the unit. So, there's a, a demand.
Are they overlaid, is it an overlay?
It is, yes.
Let me just call it active rather than senior, is it?
Correct. Active adult, but it's targeting the over fifty-five market.
It meets the federal laws. Call it what you want, lose your law.
Yeah, that's right. Matters what it says, the mind print, I guess, right, yeah.
I mean, I just want, Scott, you're generally all set. I mean, if they can, we deal with these waiver issues, and they satisfy these other minor corrections.
Yeah, I think the others are all resolvable.
Okay. What's your sense of the timeline? To get back to Scott about the...
Pretty quick. I don't, like I said, most of these are, well, most of these are very, half of these are very quick, you know. I would, I am interested to hear what your, what your, which way you would, would trend on the waivers, if changing that around is a little bit more, more, so if you're inclined to do that.
We have, we have a new highway superintendent, and I think we're really gonna look to him and the fire department, is my sense, and if, if fire lives to talk about it, then, I mean, if they're satisfied, and we'll check in with, with highway as well, and I think the two of them maybe will confer.
Okay.
And then they can get back to us too.
Okay, yeah.
But generally, we tend to listen to what they're telling us.
Okay.
Because they're the ones who have to live with what gets placed on the ground.
If you talk to them and they say...
Offline, okay.
They'll probably say the same thing.
Okay. So, would it be acceptable for you to be, for us, with you, for us to talk with them offline?
Yeah, definitely.
Okay. So, I mean, you know, we, a few weeks, I would think we could have a, a set wrapped up, I mean, that's Mike. I don't know when your next meeting is. When would you be meeting next?
We'd be looking at the end of October.
Certainly, by the end of October should not be an issue.
Twenty-third?
Twenty-third, October twenty-third.
That's perfectly acceptable for us.
Yeah, we'll be continuing the hearing.
Is that your next meeting?
We have one in between, we already have another public hearing scheduled.
Okay.
Yeah, and a bunch of other stuff that night, so it'd be better to...
You got a question?
Another question? What, how is the propane gas distributed? We heard about electricity and, are they individual tanks, one big tank?
No, what we, what we do is, you guys, I think, have done these before, too, is we work with the propane supplier, and what they'll do, actually do, is put in buried tanks. Each tank will serve like anywhere from four to six units off of one tank, and they metered individually. So, there'll be a series of tanks that are on here. The gas company, the propane company, works with the fire department, and I'm not sure who else, and they kind of put together the layout, how it all has to go in. But they, they put that in, they metered individually, they show up once every two weeks, whatever, and fill all the tanks, and just make sure they stay full that way.
I've got a quick question. You keep talking about the highway department. Is that just for design review? Is this gonna remain a condo association? Highway's not gonna be following, maintaining the roads or anything?
Right.
Okay.
I think you see any other comments?
I'm watching for you. I know there's questions that people are afraid to ask.
Well, no, but please, don't be afraid to ask questions. We'd really love to get them before us.
There we go, right here.
Is the road gonna be named differently than Highland?
Yes, we had some names that were suggested at the last meeting. We haven't put them on the plan yet, but they were historical names off of the list of the planning board yet for the area.
I think, I think we're going to Wheeler Hill Road, that's one of the suggestions on the list you got from the historical group. We thought very appropriate, and that is Wheeler Hill.
What a coincidence.
Yeah.
Thank you.
So, never heard of those people, they got the name.
Our intent is to continue the hearing, so there's two ways you can utilize that opportunity. One is to write written comments or questions to the planning board that we'd address at the next time we open, which is gonna be the twenty-third probably, where you can attend on the twenty-third with questions that you may generate between now and then, so.
Ron loves email. Yeah, and we're, by all means, you know, if there's anything you want to ask, please, you know, even if we don't have the answer tonight, we'd love to just, our goal is to get, to try to address the comments as macroscopically as possible, so comments by the peer review consultant, comments received from the board, comments received from the public conservation commission, so that we can put together a good package. So, if you don't have them tonight, send them in writing so we can get them, you know, we can work on them in the next couple of weeks. We appreciate it.
When you change your plans, can you send me a digital copy so I can put it up with the respective meeting?
Yep.
Thank you.
What is the email that you send things to? Planningboard@townofberlin.com?
No, Town Clerk.
Town Clerk, send them to Eloise?
She decides whether they're worthy or not.
I just, we just post them, just to be in compliance.
We could definitely get your digital copy. We could send them direct.
Yeah, just send them right to her, yeah.
Can I, maybe afterwards, I can get your email, and I can...
Townclerk@townofberlin.com.
Oh, okay.
Or ask Jack.
Yeah, yeah. Got it.
Thank you.
I wasn't expecting that.
Just see, make sure we get all the questions, comments, concerns, anything else. Don't waste it.
Could you possibly put some states in where the entry would be, so that way I could get police, highway, and fire department involved, so that way we can just get a visual of the line of sight?
Yep.
And get that process out of the way?
Yep.
That way you can move forward?
Yep.
I have another question. I'm sorry to ask all these questions, but Meadow Brook is a wonderful development here in Berlin. It's fifty-five plus, I think. And, and I don't even know how to ask this question, I think I'll go talk to them, but a lot of, I don't know how old that is, fifteen years now?
Seventeen.
Seventeen? So, a lot of them, a lot of the units or, or issues with the units, it's problems. They've, they've got problems with the building. And so, I would like it for this not to be a problem, like if I would buy here from you, or, you know, just I don't want problem buildings in our town. So, I don't know how to ask that question.
Well, let me give you my why explanation, and I hope I don't offend anybody. Over the years, I have worked, and those are built by Pulte. I've worked as a consultant for Pulte and the Toll Brothers. One of the hard, and I, I know you live there, so I'm just taking this on the ground.
Oh, yeah, Ron, I forgot, you lived there.
One of the hard questions I was asked numerous times by people who were there was, would you buy one of these units? And I had to bite my tongue several times before I answered. So, they're, the Pulte ones, oh, there was some Toll's here, Pultes are much better than Toll's, but they're production builders, they're not like somebody that just builds on a much smaller scale. You know, the Toll Brothers, and I'm not Pulte does it anymore, but these things are built, you know, in a factory, they bring them, they set them up quick. Every penny caught, you know, counts, and they get in and get out, gets them onto the next project, so this isn't gonna be built that way.
So, we can harass you personally?
What kind of problems are you talking about?
Well, the, like, I can't remember who told me, some leaking, some insulation problems.
Ice dams. I mean, ice dams are, no matter who builds it, ice dams are a problem.
And then some of the cells are rotten.
Yes. I mean, usually the biggest problems when you, when you do a development like that is, is issues with drainage in terms of, you know, driveways that don't drain properly, so, you know, issues like that. The structure themselves is pretty good. I mean, two-by-fours are the same, no matter where you buy them, pretty much plywood's the same, but drainage issues, ice dams, I don't care what you do, I mean, this, if you built a house so you didn't, you couldn't, a hundred percent limited ice dams, you couldn't afford to buy it, let's put it that way. So, you just have to do the best you can, and then with a little bit of normal maintenance as you go along, take care of it, that's all.
Do you have builders or a builder chosen for the project, or...
Well, as of right now, it's me, and I, you know, I've done a bunch of these. I have probably, in the last twenty years, built over a thousand units, so I've got a little bit of experience.
Have you given any thoughts of sprinkler assistance for the lungs?
For the lungs? There probably will be. I mean, usually, because we put so much landscaping in, and when you, if somebody goes and looks at Slaughter Farm, you'll see it's like too much landscaping, like landscaping is like berserk, I mean, but you invest that amount of money, you've got to put sprinklers in so the stuff doesn't die, whether it be the grass or the, or the shrubs and stuff, so there will be.
That's a sort of point, isn't it?
Yeah.
There's no sprinkler system.
I mean, it's, it's a small amount of money when you consider what you invest in landscaping itself, so we typically, I will say, in some locations, the towns won't allow us to do it, because we're on town water system, they don't want us to, to use it, but otherwise, we always put landscape, you know, sprinklers into the landscaping.
Production builders make it look nice while they're selling it, and they're...
They take the truck and spend a lot of money on the sprinklers.
Back on paint, make it look like it ain't.
Is this development gonna be compliant with the LEEDs requirements?
Yes.
Okay.
It'll be compliant with all of the, the current Energy Co. requirements, all the appliances will be, I can't remember the term now.
Energy stuff?
Energy star rated appliances. Typically, we put, like, as I mentioned earlier, the furnaces, hot water heaters are all, you know, super efficient ones, and the reason being, it, it works well for you, it also helps us, because we have to, every individual unit has to be tested now before you can get an occupancy permit that has to meet certain requirements. By using the more efficient furnaces and hot water heaters, that helps us, and the honest answer to all of that too, is when we do that, we also get rebates back from the utility companies for using those appliances.
Move that we continue this hearing on October twenty-third, at, you want to eight o'clock?
Eight o'clock.
Twenty-third, eight o'clock.
Seven.
Any more discussion? All in favor, say hi.
Hi.
Okay, right here, October twenty-third, eight o'clock. If you want to come back anymore and get full of finer details.
Thank you.
Then hold your list back there.
Oh, thank you.
Thanks, Scott, good to see you.
You're, you're working out how they, they contact you?
I don't know.
That's the last thing.
Yeah.
Timely action.
What's the scene in gravel? Did the LEED get in touch with you? Yeah, I talked to them. They'd like to chat with you.
I guess we could do that. Put on the recorder.
On the back row.
See, we have some, what we have on the agenda is timely issues for planning board consideration. Maybe somebody's talking about a development someplace, so we can chat on that.
Throw it on the table? Sure. Since you know what is better. Of course, we need town meeting for the, for the...
Correct.
The list, I think we would, we would get a special town meeting. Do you have anything set for when you would present this to town, for a town meeting?
If they...
We're hoping that's close. So, this is John Glanier, engineer, Steve in the class of investors in Westport, in the Schuhr Street.
Do you have any cards, other cards?
Yes.
I just reloaded.
So, we kind of give you an overview of everything, of things going on. Steve has, it's about fifty acres. It fronts on River of West, and it has some frontage on Summer Road. This portion of the property is where the old Worcester Sand...
Just, just...
I'm sorry.
You know, we have a small enough group, we have a small enough group if anyone wants to come up around the table, rather than...
This portion of, of the fifty acres is, what was the old Worcester Sand and gravel sand pits? The access, where we showed the access, it's about right where the, the existing access comes off of the sand pit right now. Since this went under agreement from Worcester Sand and gravel, we got, we were informed that the town is looking at, working with Mark on a piece of the town-owned land, this is the area where the...
With the town as an option on it with the Sunnys, that's a river bridge or one of the zip line or boundaries or whatever.
Times looking to acquire a part of the land, that's the school department.
Yeah, I have the forty B that's over by the school, and there's been a group of us that have been meeting for, well, over a month now. The town came to me and, in a sense, and was looking to do a, a land swap, and the Sunnys were amenable to getting water and sewer, and, but then it turned out that when they put in the zip line, they took up all the usable land for, for structures, development. So, then, at that point, the selectmen reached out to, were in process to reach out to Worcester Sand...
which as Max said, this is about fifty, sixty feet higher, it turns over into just glacial tills, big drumming.
Yeah.
You know?
No, we had no refusal up there either, but...
Higher groundwater.
Higher groundwater, tougher soils, but nothing that haven't been dealt with in the past.
Right. So as part of Steve's, originally we were looking at, you know, fifty acres, primarily all of it is in limited business, there's just a portion right here that's in the residential zone up by Summer Road, so we were looking at development options for the whole property and that's when we were contacted through the selectmen and we met with Mark about donating this ten acre area that would be in the middle, almost kind of segmenting the property. So what we're left with is looking at creating an over fifty-five in this area, we'd still have five to six acres on, with frontage on River Road for some future potential development, you know, within the limited business, donating ten acres in here and then we'd have a balance of maybe nine acres that would be fronting on Summer Road. And so we have no plans for this or this, again, this is all, everything's in flux right now. The one thing that we do know we would like to do is the over fifty-five.
So we'd be looking for planning board support of an article for the town meetings, what we're looking for.
To put that within the overlay.
Spring town meeting? As early as it could be.
I think your warrant's already closed, right?
Yeah.
There was some mention that there could potentially be a special town meeting in December.
It's, it's, we were told, yeah. It would be up to the selectmen.
Right.
That's up.
Yeah, if it happens, it happens, we're trying to be, we're cautiously optimistic.
Now, this is the senior goal, but...
Correct.
And that's donate a ten acres and what's that ten acres got to do with this one over here?
What it has to do is it's all, it's all working, it's all working towards a common goal. The selectmen, we were in touch with the board health so forth and so on and we've been meeting with Cenny and Cenny's property is twenty-six acres, twenty-five acres, which is gonna be broken into two parcels and I end up needing a total of twenty-some odd acres for the nitrogen loading for the houses which I'd be putting in, so the Cenny's parcel would be broken into a couple of pieces and I'd have the water in the sewer off of there and the entryway, but then the structures would be up on this ten acres here. So in order to make his project work, he needs the additional ten acres. Correct. And in orders for that project, if that project works, then I'm able to make the swap with the town for fifty-eight South Street and then that preserves the South Commons, there's talk of different uses for how the town would like to use that, since the regionalization of the school system and the proximity of it to the school and usability of it for recreation and recreation fields and buildings and so forth. So the Cennys were, after meeting with the selectmen and such, were willing to play ball and meet with Steve, Steve was very accommodating as well, but basically they run hand in hand in order for, if I'm able to make a deal to trade back with the town. These things all need to happen in conjunction.
And I think also that any of these land swaps that we're talking about need to be approved by town meeting as far as I know. So they'd be sponsored by your board or selectmen's board, do we need to approve the town meeting?
If that has to be, the donation of a ten acres, that has to be, does that have to be approved?
I think so.
I think, and this has to be approved.
Correct.
One of gets approved and the other one doesn't, what's that? I mean, that's...
It'll be a problem.
There's a lot of moving parts and everything has to move together.
We think it all makes sense as far as, you know, it's very important to the town as far as, I'm coming late to the party here, but I'm hearing it's very important to the town to acquire that piece off South Street. This development we're here, we think is a good, I know you just had a presentation here earlier of another over fifty-five, but we think this is a good location and we think, and this is a good use for this site here and this is gonna, you know, be a positive revenue stream for the town.
Million dollars.
Yeah, half a million dollars. Just like the development for you, I'm an experienced developer, I've built many of these developments and they're all very good sellers and they're very popular and you live in one's room, I do too, so I like it.
The approval of the fifty-five and over is, you know, the town meeting and then back through the planning boards so forth and so on, the, my approval, the town opted to enter into a lift with myself, so it's a separate ZBA and it would be the state, so the two separate, two separate animals but running simultaneously in the same direction. The, the water for both would come from the current well? Cenny's researching that right now, yeah.
Okay.
Both developments, you're over fifty-five too?
Yeah, because of the, I'm time sensitive as far as I need to continue working, so I'm gonna be back to you guys shortly with a five lot subdivision on Peach Hill Road, which has no waivers, it's just a straight five hundred foot cul-de-sac, no special anything, other than I go straight to definitive, so that gives it, so I can wrap up Green Acres and work at Peach Hill, well, Lucy Balls. So when I came up with that idea, Matt Cenny was asked what he thought of that and he says, "Great," he goes, "It feels like it just, somebody just took a gun away from my head, it's not so pressured anymore, you know, it gives a little bit of breathing room for everybody to plan as opposed to rush, rush, rush through it." So that gets me into sometime next year and that's not long enough to approve a public water supply, so the Cennys were willing to, they have twenty thousand gallons a day, they were gonna verify that and then they have to verify with DEP if it can be split up between the two projects and they also have to check the current status, because they were using it for across the street, but now everything across the street's up and running. The sewer treatment and the water supply is up and going, so they, it's free, it's available, so. So in terms of run the septic issue, you're gonna use the proposed site down here in the corner? Correct. For your project? Yes. And then you're dealing with your issues on your own profit? For septic, we'd be self sufficient. Yep. And the system that's on the Cenny's property was approved, it's still Title V compliant, would just need to be re-upped and that's all falls within the local board health since the Title V change for, I don't know what year it was, but it doesn't go to the DEP at that point, it's local reapproval. Anything under ten thousand gallons is legal. Yeah. And that would be run like, and the subdivision would be run like water and sewer and that has a large tank down below and a large pump chamber, so it's set up in the street, run like, you know, with the drainage and everything else, so all of your offsets are much more forgiving. And the fact that you're a lift, so at that point, you know, it opens up the ability much freer for waivers, for density and so forth and so on. But the, the houses are up in, it's basically a ten acre area, which would have a little bit of a buffer, but in order to get the density would be, would be cut, would be cleared and the boundless adventures would stay the way that it is and Cennys don't need to move anything, the only thing I would need to do is upgrade, they have an approved plan already for that road going in and they've done one stage of it and they expressed to me that I would have to do the other stage of it as far as bringing that pavement up to quality and the drainage and so forth and so on, but at the same time, there'd be a number of utilities, water, sewer and drainage in the street itself and that would cut right through their parking lot and go up the hill and they'd be on their area and we'd be on our area and they're basically a seasonal function, so when the leaves come off the trees and nobody's disturbed by each other. Do they have a pinch point in their road? Yeah. Probably the crossings.
It's right in the corner.
Right here. I can't remember what it was. Do you have a detention for an extra? Was it thirty? We allow them a waiver for reduced width.
Was width or radius?
Width. Was width. Because we figured it was a seasonal use.
And low traffic. And low traffic.
So, so that road up in there to the, your proposal, that would be a...
A town way or... No, it would be private way.
Private way?
Yeah.
And our roads would be private also.
Right, yeah, yeah. There's a nice contour line that when you, when you come in here, that contour just runs right around here and you get the high point, so the road, it's, in order to build it, it's not a big cut, there's no big fill, it's, it's... It's a, it's a pretty consistent slope going from north to south and you, and you meet grade. Right there. Right along, yeah. So you can, you can come right through and then, as Mark said, you can do a nice horseshoe like loop. You get right up there. I don't like the loop, loop coming up and with some stubs off of it or possibly come right all the way around and back, I haven't even started to do the layout yet, I just, I took one of the plans that I have, like Green Acres, the clearing is on about fifteen acres and I took some of the units that are front load garages and tried to condense those and basically on about, I did, I did lay out some figuring enough room for road and I'm confident that on that piece of property, I can fit what I need to.
The grade does work good here.
Yeah, it works really good.
And our grade, it comes up quite steep right here, so developing this area right here, we may wanna take it back off that roadway there, we haven't done any designs or anything, but it's something that we're thinking about.
So you'd propose a limited business use on the excess parcel at some future date? For this piece? Yeah.
Residential.
Probably residential. So you'd need it to be rezoned? Or, yeah, I think the zone line cuts through here. Right, so the limited business doesn't allow residential, so... So that's something, and, you know, we, we haven't even really started thinking about that, we've been concentrating on this, we need to, we need to start thinking about that, so if we're gonna do anything, we lump everything together. In the, in the six acre parcel, you'd think about development as a limited business use at some later date?
We don't know what the use would be that also, you know, this is all happening very fast for us, so we originally were commenting this right here right now.
I was, I was thumbing through the uses that are allowed in a limited business and the term limited seems pretty...
I'm gonna be worried about this.
Otherwise, we call business.
So we're scratching my head a little bit.
Well, you're waiting to see if there's gonna be another special town meeting, I hope.
We're hoping, we're just hoping.
Okay, so what you need for the regular, for the annual town meeting is what, twenty-five signatures, I believe, for annual?
Ten.
Just ten?
Ten for an annual, if the selectmen have already called, opened a warrant for a meeting, then it's a hundred to put a question on and it's two hundred signatures to force the selectmen to call for a special.
Can a selectman call a special on their own?
Hmm?
Can a selectman call a special on their own?
Of course.
Yeah, they can do what they want.
There you go.
The select if you do that.
Yeah, so there is possibility of a special.
Just costs money.
Okay. Any other questions or comments?
Yeah, I think the question's a little... Yeah, and just, this is a pretty picture, a chart of the show. So this is where we were thinking of, again, the access is where the, where the existing access is, good site distances, both the east and the west. We were, we're showing a, you know, basically a loop road, maybe a cul-de-sac, this is our first blush at a layout, again, sixty-six units, we went through, you know, making sure we had adequate common land, this would, again, be all in all within, within the existing pit, there is some riverfront area over on the east side, so we'd be keeping any development, probably doing some drainage within the riparian zone by keeping...
So, you'd propose a, a limited business use on the excess parcel at some future date?
For this piece?
Yeah.
Residential.
Probably residential.
So, you'd need it to be rezoned?
Or, yeah, I think the zone line cuts through here.
Right, so the limited business doesn't allow residential, so?
So, that's something, and, you know, we, we haven't even really started thinking about that, we've been concentrating on this. We need to, we should, we need to start thinking about that, so if we're gonna do anything, we lump everything together.
In the, in the six acre parcel, you'd think about development as a limited business use at some later date?
We don't know what the use would be that also, you know, this is all happening very fast for us, so, we originally were commenting this right here, right now.
I was, I was thumbing through the uses that are allowed in a limited business, and the term limited seems pretty...
Otherwise, it's called business.
So, we're, scratching my head a little bit.
Well, you're waiting to see if there's gonna be another special town meeting, I, I...
We're hoping, we're just hoping.
Okay, so, so what you need for the regular, for the, the annual town meeting is what, twenty-five signatures, I believe, for? For annual, uh?
Ten.
Just ten?
Ten for an annual, if the selectmen have already called, opened a warrant for a meeting, then it's a hundred to put a question on, and it's two hundred signatures to force the selectmen to call for a special.
Can a selectman call a special on their own? Can a selectman call a special on their own?
Of course.
The select if you do that.
So, there is possibility of a special.
Just costs money.
Okay. Any other questions?
Yeah. Yeah, and just, this is a pretty picture, it's part of the show. So, this is where we were thinking of, again, the access is about where the, where the existing access is. Good site distances, both the east and the west. We were, we're showing a, a, you know, basically a loop road, maybe a cul-de-sac. This is our first blush, yeah, at a layout, again, sixty-six units. We went through, you know, making sure we had adequate common land, this would, again, be, all in all, within, within the existing pit. There is some riverfront area over on, on the east side, so we'd be keeping any development, probably doing some drainage within the, the rip, the, the riparian zone, by keeping all the development outside the two hundred foot. Duplex style, um, these units are based off of another project I, I did for Steve, which, um, we have some elevation plans and, and whatnot, those, those are about, what, how many square feet, those twenty-two?
Yeah, they're somewhere over twenty-five.
Twenty-two, twenty-five?
Twenty-five.
Pretty close to this. One acre, two square meters.
Depending on the second, yeah, depending on the second floor of the square footage.
All two bedrooms?
All two bedrooms. Our first floor master, the down on the first floor does have a, like cathedral ceiling. And then optional three season porches, with that's off of that, depending on, on what the customer wants, if they wanna, you know, have some, some additional three season space, whether it's temperature controlled or not, that's up to them, I guess.
Two car garages.
Two car garages. Yeah, two car garages on each.
The garages are on the front?
Yeah, they are, we make them nice looking though.
Nice looking garage.
They are.
We use the expensive garage doors, car, carriage style.
Yeah.
So, that kinda softens it a little bit.
With windows.
Uh, you know, leaving common land and open space around the perimeter, this is that area where the great stuff to come up, if you ever been out to the sand pit, this is all really a flat part, everything in general, I mean, it's pretty flat, we're waiting on aerial, um, topography, but generally, everything does flow in, in the east of the direction, ends up down towards, uh, towards the letting, and down towards the, uh, the brook. And of course, we go to conservation, make sure we know all the stuff on management and whatnot. I'm not overly worried about areas for septics, because it's all sand and gravel, it's all view material, so, we don't, we wouldn't end up having any pumps, we have to do some localized ones, take a handful of units, put it into, into one system, make sure it moves gravity, we don't wanna, if we don't have to do pumps, we don't want them. Gravity doesn't break. So, yeah, that's, that's the long and short of it. And then, again, this is about where that six acre, that six acre parcel is, so, and we'd be looking at options for, for that.
Just wondering if there's a general consensus of something like this, where you take the two different, um, three different or four different things that are happening all at once, is it something that the, uh, the planning board is up to, support at, at town meeting, whether it was a special town meeting, or whether it was a springtime town meeting?
Whether, whether we would support it?
Not for the overlay.
Yeah, we'd be looking for this to be supported for the, for the overlay, to change the zoning map, to include this as part of the, the over fifty-five overlay on the zoning. And then we'll be, we'll be sorting out some of these other things, we should really get going on, on sorting out what, what we may, may not do.
Give you a different maybe.
Well, you don't need to, if, whether you wanna address it or not, you're going to ask the question of what happens to the other parcels.
Right.
Yeah, right, that's why we wanted to show them, but we, we got it.
Yeah, we gotta, we gotta do a little homework. Good, all right.
Okay.
Thanks, thank you very much. Let me ask you another question. If, um, timing wise, if for some reason there isn't a special town meeting, and has to go on the warrant for the spring town meeting, um, one idea I have was moving forward with the permitting, going through planning board consultation, for, um, you know, getting things through that process prior to going on spring town meeting?
At our risk.
At our own risk. And then, for two reasons, one, it just gets it done and out of the way. We don't have to start after spring town meeting and then end up through another, another building season. Two, when it comes time for spring town meeting, and everybody's, the town members are voting, they know exactly what they're getting. It's not, oh yeah, let's put an overlay on this, and we're gonna be doing development.
Maybe it works, maybe it takes a work, yeah.
Yeah, they, they would know exactly all the nuts and bolts of, of what they would be improving.
I, it just seems chicken and egg type of thing, I mean, uh...
Right.
I mean, you get the permits where you don't have a land that's permitted to do what you wanna do.
You don't get the permits, you go through, you go through, you get as close as you can possibly get to getting permits, so that way, once it gets the zoning overlay, it's a rubber stamp at that point, all the questions have been answered.
Do you go through, you know, public, any public carings, if you thought they were necessary, or public carings?
Yeah.
Public carings, and then, you know, our, our design, and then the, your consultants review of the engineering?
Yeah, and then the, whether you do a conditional approval on, on going to town meeting and getting the overlay. So, really, all the risk is on us.
Just not aware that that was a, a way of going provisional permits.
We could do that, it's just whether we have, you know, usually, uh, spring is packed with stuff, we're trying to put on the town meeting and stuff like that, so we'd be dealing with permitting of this.
We got some comments from somebody in the audience.
Usually, the town, the warrant for the annual town meeting closes in the neighborhood of Valentine's Day. So that you have a, a concrete date to work with. And in the future, if you're bringing plans to the planning board, could you email them to me first?
I don't know why anybody wouldn't do that. Absolutely.
Because we don't know the time clock.
Yeah.
Now that we know that, okay.
It's just for the open meeting law, we're supposed to, we're required.
So, instead of hard, yeah, well, are, would you require to have hard copies and electronic, or we can just?
At this point, you're giving them the hard copies, I just need an electronic, so I can say, hey, this is, gonna be clocked at the meeting, that's all.
All right. Does anybody have any other questions? Yeah?
So, we know it's a little unconventional, it's not doing site plan review without the overlay, but, in this case?
Yeah.
I don't, I don't think there's anything that prohibits you from, uh, letting us do that.
Just the risk is on you, Tom?
Yeah.
Have you considered the, the town, since we have several senior residential developments, of golden age, of what we call senior housing, retirement?
Active adult.
We're going jogging later. Trying to bike, kayaking.
That's why we don't have a security board.
There's a, there's a very strong demand for this type of house, and it's very desirable to people over fifty-five. When you're under fifty-five, you cringe and you say, how, how could you ever live in one of those things? But when you're over fifty-five, it's very desirable, and I speak, you know, from experience, and you can probably attest to the same thing. It's just nice to get rid of that big, huge house, that consumes a lot of electricity and gas, and a lot of maintenance, and...
Watch somebody else shovel the wood.
Yeah.
Watch him do that, too, and when leaves fall, they're not my leaves, they're somebody else's leaves.
So, so with your parcel up near, up on the top, sixty feet in elevation?
Yeah.
So, you'll be looking down over the tops of this?
No, you can't see it really.
Can't?
No.
No, is there vegetation between the two?
A whole bunch.
Yeah.
Yeah, it's all of, all the trails that the four wheels and snowmobiles used to go down are all thrown over. It took me almost an hour with the excavator to blaze a trail up to get up there. And then, right on the face of the, uh, there's a little bit of ledge at the top, and it's heavily, heavily wooded, where the sun hits it. It thins out once you get into the woods, you can maybe get, I was able to get the excavator through the woods with minimal, pushing over a minimal amount of trees, but getting up there was very, very thick. Some of it down below is your invasive species, but on the, uh, the top of the rim is all regular pines and oaks and everything else. Just because they've been there for a long time. And there's, the whole face fills out because of the exposure to the sun. And it's at least one good site piece nesting there.
Somebody has a comment.
So, when that was gravel pit, we used to go and look at it every year, and he was told that if he was gonna close it, he had to bring those sides into conformance of whatever degree that they were supposed to be done. Was that done?
Pretty much, yeah.
Yeah?
Yeah, I heard they can't leave it greater than a thirty-foot slope, uh, but there's about an eight to ten-foot piece just in one section, the rest of it's all ramped up.
In the back.
In the back, yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, yeah, they spent years and years and years doing that.
Well, the last time that, well, I don't know that you guys walked on it, but the last time we walked, he still hadn't finished it.
Yeah, I remember when it wasn't done, probably when he was quite a bit younger, um, but they have, it's, it's all done now, and there's still some material on site, they've got a bunch of material that they used to cap the place with. We dug into a bunch of the piles, and it's a looming mix or whatever. But I was actually surprised, um, how much, they, they capped the whole place. And then the area that isn't capped, it's just ramped up till, which I was able to take the excavator and come up to one, one spot in the corner, and able to get up to that higher elevation. It's a challenge, but it's, you know, it's not something you do with a vehicle or anything else, but...
Truck machine.
Yeah, yeah.
Okay, we look forward to you coming up with something before, before Valentine's Day.
Valentine's is a surprise. Thank you very much. Thanks for your time, everyone in here. Thank you.
Can't forget that, I'll remember when I get outside.
Can I add one thing? So, the Economic Development Committee had a meeting at Highland Commons, hosted by Cabela.
Oh, yeah, I heard about that.
And they, their, Cabela then suggested that they'd like to bring managers from other stores together to meet with the Economic Development Committee. So, good, and, um... And the Economic Development Committee, though, wondered about the, the legality of meeting up there, and, and then any conflict with the, um, laws that pertain to gifts and gratuities and conflict of interest.
Gifts and gratuities because of the meeting room?
Well, because the meeting room and, and, you know, if they give them a cookie or, yeah, so, um, what they would like the selectmen and the planning board as the appointing authorities to do is to acknowledge the fact that they're meeting off of a town facility, and that, um, we understand that there's perhaps value of some sort for the use of the rooms, but that it's, in our sense, not in conflict with...
Inconsequential.
Yeah, inconsequential.
I don't think it even counts, because they're, they're going to a meeting, they're not, they're not getting donated a room that they have the room meeting in.
Doesn't matter.
Yeah, but anyway, so, that's your understanding, right?
Yeah, um, I think, uh, what Peter recommended was that the selectmen needed to accept the so-called gift as, as it's coming to the town, rather than going to the individuals.
Yeah.
And it was also recommended that we, that Peter needed to check our charter, which we don't have. So, I'm not quite sure if we can accept the gift, that was my own question.
What, what is the gift that you put?
Well, it's the gift of using the room, plus they get subs from Subway, they're feeding them.
Some wouldn't consider a Subway a gift.
Remember where we are.
So, so I, you know, I'm anxious to hear what you guys think.
I don't have a state where it's, I was a federal worker, and I went to private companies, and we had meetings at their room, we never even, that was never a consideration, that, you know.
That you go elsewhere, do you?
Yeah, no, that, that's not, that we're accepting anything.
Oh.
For example, a meal or an entertainment event ticket for the same giver, each valued at less than fifty, together could be valued at more than fifty, and, but, so...
And that's, it'd be easier, I believe.
Well, just, just very easily, again, it's inconsequential.
Right, so, I, the...
So, what do you think we should do?
I think that they are, that they're perfectly within their, um, purview to go and do that.
So, the, so...
Actually, you could look at it as a meeting of the owners of all the businesses, and they are attending the meeting at the owner's facility.
Yeah, so, the, the, you're diluting the value significantly if you, you know, but, um, I, I guess, if there's some effort on the part of, um, the Economic Development Committee and the selectmen to clarify, then the, the planning board's simple way out of this is to say that I move that, um, we acknowledge the fact that the Economic Development Committee is meeting, um, at Highland Commons, and that, uh, space and some refreshment is being offered, and we consider that inconsequential, and as a result, don't believe that it's a conflict or to be seen as a, a gift in excess of what the law would consider acceptable, um, and that we'll allow the selectmen and the Economic Development Committee to sort things out if they believe that that's necessary.
Well, I, I, I think Peter's investigated this to some extent.
Yeah.
And I think Peter probably could come up with a letter he needs signed by the selectman and the, and the planning board.
Well, yeah, I mean, why don't we just pass the buck and allow the selectmen to?
Second.
Pass on our behalf, just we're fine with it, regardless of what they do. I mean, we don't need to look at this again.
You, you're making a motion to pass on to the select?
He made it, I second it.
He made it, he seconded it.
Wow, okay.
It's on petition.
Long faith to say aye.
Aye. Thanks.
Thank you.
Chris is scratching her head saying...
What happened?
Did, did they really say anything, no value?
Hey, can you copy that motion and send it to the selectmen by email, so that we can make that motion?
Any, any other timely discussions?
Just that, again, we have four articles that we've sponsored, and one article that is a citizen's petition that are modifications to the zoning bylaw, that will be on the, um, hearing scheduled for the ninth of October. And, again, the first article is simply a section that puts definitions into our definition section. A second portion of that first article creates a new section five eighty-five, medical marijuana, marijuana establishments, and gives the ZBA guidances to what they'd be expected to do in terms of site plan approval or, um, offering a special permit. And that then there are three separate bylaws that we've placed on the warrant. The first would allow any of the uses that we've defined in the limited business and limited industrial zone. The second would allow all those uses except retailer and, um, dispensary in the limited business and limited industrial zone. And the third wouldn't allow any of those uses in any zones. What, what I did is I, I asked town council in that piece that.
You didn't hear anything back?
Not yet, but I wanted to try again, because it, it has to do with the, the, the issue of passing over some of these articles, if some are, some are passed, you know, if, if our second article allowing the use in all those, those two zones were to pass, you know, I guess we'll discuss this more after the hearing, but that it might be a situation where we then move to pass over the other two. But if, if there were to be discussion on the floor, and we were to, or after the hearing, let's say, we were to decide that we wanted to add dispensary, for instance, into the second article, but leave retail out. I, I'd like to ask town council, when can an amendment to one of these conflict with, you know, being more restrictive or less restrictive, all those issues? Cause I'd like those hypotheticals to be answered before we get to town meeting.
Yeah.
So, so if someone were to say, I don't have any trouble with eliminating retail in all zones, I don't see why we're eliminating the dispensary in all zones, and, you know, you might wanna tuck that back in. But do you tuck that into number two, or do you take it out of number one? Cause the same result is.
What's the strategy if none of them get in here?
So, that's the other issue. If, if none of them pass, we've at least got definitions and we've got a procedure. So if someone comes in and says, I wanna put this retail use in this retail zone, the ZBA has a process whereby they can address it. So the argument is you pass the first one regardless. Don't, don't leave that one sitting out, you know, cause.
I think this is just gonna be really confusing to everybody.
But special permit requirement, marijuana establishment shall only be allowed by special permit from the special permit granting authority in accordance with statute of general law that in section twelve thirty of the Berlin zoning bylaws, site plan approval is subject to the following statements, regulations, no special permit for any marijuana establishment shall be issued without site plan approval, so, I mean, we've got that language in place. So, that to me is the easy part of the meeting, you just go in and say, regardless of how you're gonna vote on any of these other articles, the citizen's petitions, which are two, one a general bylaw, one a zone bylaw, or the three options that we've got. Regardless, you need to vote for this, because if the zoning articles don't get two-thirds, and the citizen doesn't get fifty percent and nothing passes, which is conceivable, you've got something in place, and you need that.
Can, is it possible, can we discuss it with Barry, discussing all these articles on one, one discussion?
That's what he wants to do.
Did Barry say that already?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, so, general discussion about the whole package.
Right. Discuss all the articles at once and then vote on them one by one.
Bang, 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 bang.
And then we can discuss what happens if you pass this one or don't pass that one, like you were just brought up.
Yeah, so, but that's the, I mean, and then, if, if the, the citizen's petition to not allow passed, I mean, someone raised the question, what, what happens if, if the zoning article passes and the citizen petition article passes? But it still seems to me unlikely that.
Sure, leave it, leave it there.
That you, you'd end up in that situation.
And get a prohibited use. If it ever wants to come back, you already get the definitions of.
Yeah, so.
That's a good strategy.
That's my news, but I'm gonna chase town council again with those questions.
Good.
And then, you know, hopefully we could, I mean, I'll just, I can say, look, we've got the hearing coming up, it'd be nice to have answers to these questions before the hearing, and then we'll really have a good town meeting. She won't be, do you know, do we know who's coming to town meeting?
No, I had talked.
Is Lauren, or?
I had talked, was it Lauren, who just?
Lauren's doing the town administrator work review.
I thought I asked Catherine.
And we, and Catherine said she'd pass on the word that we.
Cause she wasn't available?
Hope, Catherine isn't available.
Okay, then maybe it will be Lauren.
But Catherine, have you made a, has the, have the selectmen made a formal request for somebody from KP Law?
No.
So we may not have anybody.
Oh, no, no, we will have someone, but we were supposed to send the warrant to them tomorrow, and then we were going to ask them then. So are you requesting someone?
It would be nice.
Well, I mean, anyone in particular.
In particular?
Oh.
Well, Catherine said she can't come, so.
Does she say she can't come with us?
Yeah, she said she wasn't gonna be available.
Okay.
I thought she was sort of wishy-washy, or did you speak to her again after we had?
No, but I, I, that's how I interpreted what she said.
No, she, she.
She said, you're, if you were hoping that I could come, it wasn't gonna be, and we said, well, okay, but we could certainly ask again.
I would agree with that.
But.
So that you have another meeting going on at the same time.
Be, it'd be helpful for the town management study committee to have Lauren there on the.
Well, then, that's probably who we'll end up with, unless she's not available.
Yeah.
Okay.
I've probably forgotten three or four things, but that's all I can remember right now.
Okay, I should really.
Oh, and I, I, I'm preparing language for the selectmen to give them tomorrow. They want a, a comment on each article?
A summary.
The purpose of this zoning bylaw amendment is to add language to define the marijuana uses that could be proposed for approval in town, and this amendment also establishes guidelines and procedures that the zoning board of appeals would follow when considering an application for site plan approval and a special permit for any proposed marijuana use. I mean, I don't see what else we can say about our first one. And then the others are just, this one would allow those uses in LB and LI, this one would allow those uses less, retail and dispensary in LB and LI, and this one wouldn't allow them either, but, they don't need enough.
Do you need a code?
I'll say limited business, I won't say LI and LB.
Yeah, cause we did, that's why we didn't understand it, I guess.
Everybody, ev- everybody knows.
I have a question for you.
Everybody knows.
If, if Hudson allowed sale in Highland Commons, could they do that on their own? Since their zoning is in the Hudson, and the same thing with Marlboro at the Solomon Pond Mall?
It looks around the right side of the line.
So RO relates simply for the town of Berlin, doesn't have any kind of teeth, teeth?
In terms of usage on their side?
Yeah, in terms of what, because marijuana, the marijuana would be, all right, so all they'd have to do is get the zoning in their town to allow it in either of those malls.
Didn't, didn't, don't we have something, I know at Highland Commons, that.
Says we can dictate what the uses are?
No, lights out.
Time to go.
There's something like.
That camera's not any good anymore, is it?
Yeah, it's still on.
Yeah, but is it, so it hears this, but it doesn't see us?
Not very well.
Okay.
Now it can see.
Low light level TV. I have something like lighting.
Lighting, and that?
I mean, lighting, lighting that was in Berlin, they had to do it in Hudson.
We said, we said, here are the, the guidelines for lighting, noise, hours of operation, stuff like that, but I don't think we ever implied that we'd have any oversight about use.
Use? No, not use, I, that's just one of the.
I'd argue that the town of Hudson would strongly suggest that the town of Berlin take their nose and stick it in someplace else, because I strongly suggest that the town of Berlin do that to have town Hudson.
Yeah, yeah.
And that, that, that first, that first article, the summary you had.
I'll send it to you, you can.
No, I'm just, just looking, does it have to explain, like, hey, here's, here's what we have, but then we got someplace, we got all this information of what can happen if you permit it, and then, so we got this article that doesn't permit it, but we want it anyway, you know.
And spelling errors are, cause I did clean it up the series.
To explain that, even though we put this, this word in, it doesn't permit it.
Well, we have a definition for multifamily dwelling, but we don't permit it.
But that doesn't clarify, that just confuses the situation, why the hell do you have multifamily if you don't permit it, so, I mean, I mean, put that word in there.
In this case, we don't know if we won't permit it, so we need to, we need to put the language in.
And that's what you said in that summary, that, you know, one of those things you get so close to, you know what's happening, you know. People come out and they don't know what's happening, I say, what does LI mean?
I can, I, I'll remember it.
Text me, I'll do my best.
You know, twenties or thirties.
Close his puppy up, oh, his tennis school or something, yeah?
No, I'm just.
Okay, you ready to close yourself?
Yeah, I'll remember that stuff later, it's like.
Make a motion to close the meeting, okay?
Second.
Well, those are famous, say aye. Aye.
Aye.